Good evening everyone, we're going to make a start just past six o'clock. Welcome to the North Area Committee meeting. Today's meeting is open to the public and a warm welcome to you all. My name is councillor Alan Hooper, I'm councillor for West Ecclesfield and I'm Chair of this committee. Before I ask other councillors to introduce themselves, I'll hand over to Philippa, Democratic Services, to read out the housekeeping arrangements. Over to you Philippa.
Thank you Chair. Before we start, there were just a few housekeeping arrangements to mention. Please can I request that mobile telephones and other such equipment are switched to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting. There is no fire test plan for today. If there is an emergency evacuation, please take instructions from the council staff present. The assembly point is in the car park, just through that door and down the hill a little bit. The toilet facilities are situated in the corner over there. The meeting today is open to the public and will be streamed live and for subsequent broadcasts via the council's website. You should be aware that the council is a data controller under the Data Protection Act. Data collected during this webcast will be retained in accordance with the council's public policy. By entering the meeting room, you are consenting to be filmed and to the possible use of those images and sound recordings for webcasting. One final thing to mention, we have hearing loops available. If you'd like to use one, please let us know. Thank you.
Thank you Philippa. Can I now ask members to introduce themselves and start at the far end please?
Evening, Lewis Shinchen, councillor for Stockbridge and Upfordon.
Good evening, Anne Whishaker, councillor for West Ecclesfield.
Good evening, Alan Woodcock, councillor for East Ecclesfield.
Good evening, Mike Leavie, councillor for West Ecclesfield.
Dave Lock, community services manager for the North Line.
Philippa, Democratic Services Officer.
Councillor Vicky Priestley, Stannington Ward.
Good evening, Richard Williams, councillor for Stannington Ward.
Evening everyone, I'm Julie Grokut, I'm councillor for Stockbridge and Upfordon Ward.
Hi everybody, thanks for coming, I'm Craig Gamble-Pew, I'm one of the councillors for East Ecclesfield Ward.
Good evening, my name's Janet Ridley and I'm one of your councillors, Ward councillors for Stockbridge and Upfordon.
Very much everyone. Before we proceed, I'd like to, with the agenda, just like to explain how the meeting will work. First, we'll deal with the formal business, apologies, declarations and minutes of the last meeting. We will then have public questions, petitions, and we'll give answers to what we can with the public questions. We'll then move on to the item of the North Area Committee, proposed spending. The area manager will first give a presentation, that's Dave, and then there will be a discussion debate and members of the committee will be asked to agree the recommendations of the report. Then we will have updates from Sheffield Caribbean Sports Club, Thorncliff Leisure Centre, Ecclesfield Parish Council. And finally, we will have an update on referrals that have been made to policy committees at the Sheffield City Council. So, I could have apologies for absence. We've no apologies but expecting councillor Victoria Boden. Exclusions of the present public, to identify items where resolutions may be moved to exclude the present public. I'm not aware of anything that we need to exclude the present public. Agenda item number five, sorry, it's four, is declarations of interest. Members to declare any interest they have in the business to be considered at this meeting. Are there any declarations of interest, from anyone? No? Thank you very much. And we can move on now to agenda item number five, which is minutes of the previous meeting. And they're on the agenda pack, pages nine to eighteen. This is the minutes of the meeting held at Stannington on the eighteenth of January. We'll go through them page by page, if you'd like to stop me as we move through. First page is page nine. And page ten. Page eleven. And page twelve. Page thirteen. And fourteen. And page fifteen. Page sixteen. Page seventeen. And page eighteen. Has anyone wanted to make any comment? Yeah? Councillor Baker, yeah?
Thank you Chair, just to say that regarding the gas flood, as we now call it, in the Stannington area, we still do have people who are experiencing problems getting new hobs or boilers, and problems with sorting out their appropriate gas bills with their gas providers. It is an ongoing story, but we are finally beginning to get to the last problems, but it still is there and it hasn't completely gone away yet, and that's a point I wanted to make. Thank you Chair.
Is there anything that this committee can do to help any of the matters?
I don't think so Chair, there's been, as always, neighbourhoods, neighbours supporting neighbours as well, the aspect of doing all the repairs and providing the replacement items, but are experiencing problems with getting the numbers that they need, but they're sorting that, Kaden are communicating with gas providers. The ones with the biggest problems are those who had smart meters, because when they were repaired as an emergency, they were not replaced by smart meters, so residents are waiting for their suppliers to change those meters and to agree an appropriate bill. A bit complicated, but they're getting there, I just thought it was appropriate to report it here.
Yeah, thank you. Richard?
Thank you Chair. Yes, concerning the matter of Stannington Pavilion, which was raised at the last LAC meeting, I'd just like to report back that a meeting was held between representatives of Spark, which is the community group, looking at getting involved with that pavilion, and officers of the council, I have to say, having read the report from Spark, it was very positive, and I think a long way to go yet, but certainly it's moving in the right direction at last.
Thank you very much. Anyone else now? Okay. We can move on then to agenda item number six, which is public questions and petitions. Are there any public questions? I've had one that's been given to me tonight regarding the parish council. Yeah, shall we just get the mic to you, I'm not sure exactly what you're asking for.
Oh, okay, I just want some information. Name as well. Yeah, it's Bridget Kelly. So I just wanted some information about the process of opening up the parish council, I believe there's elections soon, is that correct?
Yeah.
Anybody see something about it?
Yeah, yeah, as the city council, elections on May the fourth, there are parish council elections on that same day. We have the clock of the parish council, yeah, yeah, but it will be the same timescales as the city council elections. So all the information will come out then. I'm not sure else I can add.
Sorry, I did say I was going to ring you anyway.
Right, okay. Do you want to speak?
No, no, I did prompt you, I did say at the earlier I'd bring Bridget to talk about the process.
I didn't ask a question before I told you.
Yeah, I know you did.
So all the information will be, as per Sheffield City Council, from the elections office there. We should be getting back, shouldn't we, through to the parish council, yeah, regarding applications to stand as a councillor. Thank you. We have had two written questions, you can find them. One, I don't think any of the questioners are here, one is from Megan Smith, who's, I believe, Chair or Secretary of the Grenicide Conservation Society, and she states, as you are aware, we have raised this matter at Conservation Society meetings for several years now, the situation is worsening as the area becomes more possible. So, I'll read it. Okay. So, she's asking questions regarding the roadside parking on Woodhead Road, Grenicide, near the car park for Weta, Grenow and Worncliffe Woods. And she's stating there are two serious issues with traffic and parking. One, this area has become very popular, especially with the mountain biking community, this means that at weekends there are lots of large vehicles using the area which park on the roadside when the car park and laybys are full. This often means that it is very difficult to see across the road and is very dangerous for young families, dog walkers, horse riders and cyclists. It also makes it difficult for other road users as cars, cyclists and pedestrians have to weave through the parked cars in single file. Number two, the other problem with the stretch of road that includes the car park, which is very straight for about a quarter of a mile, and there are no speed restrictions. So when there are no traffic cars parked, they can drive at six mile an hour, which makes crossing the road or exiting the car park very dangerous. We are aware that there have been discussions with the police already, but this has not materialised in any obvious signs or improvements to the road. We have also tried asking Sheffield City Council directly, but was told that it would not be a priority unless there was an incident to raise it up the list. This situation has been going for a long time now, and we feel that a lack of action on this is unacceptable. We do not want to wait for a serious accident to happen before it's addressed. We would very much like your help with this. Yours sincerely, Megan Smith, Chairperson. I think the best way to tackle this is to forward this question to our highways department and perhaps the local policing team. Does anyone else, any comments?
Just a couple of points for me, for me, and I know it's not, I know it's not my ward, but in Stockbridge and Upfordon, we recently, Ward councillors, used funding to put a speed survey across the road, so that we'd actually got some accurate data about speed of traffic on a particular road. So I think, I do know Woodhead Road quite well and I do understand the issues that are on there, so I think that's one thing that perhaps Ward councillors could look at doing so that they've got some accurate information with regards to speeding, because what we found with the speed survey that we did in our ward was, people were complaining about speeding and the speed survey showed that actually there wasn't any, it was more of a perception than an actual happening. And I think the other thing to say is, as a council, you know, we could go to the expense of making that road a thirty mile an hour road, for example, but if people are intent on speeding, they will speed. And a road that's a national speed limit that you can go sixty mile an hour on is not a target that drivers and motorists should be aiming to drive at. You should always only drive to the conditions of the road. So if the conditions of the road, with lots of parking on weekends, say that people, you know, it's more difficult to drive, then people, drivers, should be adjusting their speed accordingly. So the issue for us as a council is, we don't have authority over motori speeding, we can put the signs up, we can spend the money making it a thirty mile an hour road, but if the police are not enforcing it, then actually it's a complete waste of time, effort and energy. And it's about people taking personal responsibility as motorists, of making sure that they drive sensibly and properly, and that, you know, we have some proper enforcement from the police where we know that there are, there are issues or concerns, because, you know, the question for me is, if on that, and there is a long stretch of road, straight stretch of road, if we put thirty mile an hour signs up tomorrow, would that make people change the way they drive on that road? And that's, that unfortunately is a sad reality of the situation that we're dealing with, so I don't know if we've had conversations with the local police about enforcement on there, but, you know, probably we have, but that's perhaps something else that we need to take up with the police and make sure that they do do. Thank you Chair.
Bye.
Thanks Chair, I think the major issue here is that this car park has been outgrown by the number of people that are turning up to use Grenow Woods. There are barely twenty parking spaces there, and it's totally insufficient, and therefore all the people do is park on the road, which makes it more and more difficult for passing cars to get past the cars that are parked. So, I think the first thing I want to ask is, how can we improve the parking situation on?
Yeah, Craig?
Yeah, thank you. So, it's in the next door ward to mine, but I've been approached by some constituents in East Ecclesfield who've been talking about setting up a kind of traffic campaign group. And what I'll do is I'll contact the Conservation Society who've raised this issue, to see, I don't know at this point whether these people want to have this group just to cover my ward, which is East Ecclesfield, or whether they want to go further afield, but while there's people in the community wanting to look at solutions to these kind of issues of speeding and unsafe parking, I think it would be good to get them talking to each other, so I'll undertake to do that Chair, thank you.
Thank you. There's two issues here, one is the issue at the weekends with the amount of traffic, and the other is, in the weekdays, morning, evening, night time, it is a sixty mile an hour unrestricted, yet the A61, which is the main road, is only a fifty mile an hour limit, which is quite a bit contradictory really. We did manage some, ten years ago I believe, to get some repeater signs that as you enter in Grenocide Village from that particular stretch of wood, to reduce the speed gradually, and down to thirty mile an hours, it's Grenocide. And that works very well, there are speed bumps as you enter as well, so actually I think when you hit the main street and the Grenocide, it isn't a problem, but it is a problem on there. So I think, yeah, we'll see what we can do, where we can go. I think first and foremost, she's probably asking just for some signs to beware as people are crossing, because you cross from one side to the other to get to, from Weta Woods to Grenow Woods.
Chair, we've had some considerable problems with speed limits within rural areas in our ward. We know that the city council sets some guidelines about what speed limits there could be in different areas, so what we've actually done is refer it to the policy committee, which it should be on their work programme now, to ask them to revisit speed limits on rural roads. Rural roads. Rural roads. Because, you know, there are some dangers, a number of corners where you can't see around and you have speeding cars coming in the opposite direction. And if we can't, and we were advised that we couldn't have certain speed limits in certain rural areas, so we've asked them to revisit that. So that would obviously impact on the whole of the city when that comes to be, so there's something happening there already. Thank you Chair.
Thank you Penny. Just take this lady, can you get the mic to this lady please, yeah? Can you just introduce yourself and...
Sorry, Andrea Hatchet, I live in Ecclesfield, but I, I do go to Grenocide Woods quite frequently with my kids, and I totally agree with what the lady was saying in terms of the traffic there, you know, when you're trying to get out, speeding, and there are cars speeding along the road, and you won't have that all the time granted, so I think actually something like what you were saying Julie about having that street, that speed trap there, whatever it is, just to see what the actual flow is across there and get some data, so we can go with that hard data, that would actually be something that would be really good to have. But, I know you mentioned Alan about the traffic, you know, it goes down when you go into Grenocide, and you're absolutely right, but for when you get into Grenocide, you have speed bumps all the way throughout it, so of course you're not going to speed through that, you can't, it's going to damage your car to do it, but when you go then up to where the Grenocide Park is, there's nothing up there, there's absolutely nothing, so people do speed down, and then they slam on the brakes when they get to Grenocide, like centre town for want of saying, because you have to, because there's a bend there and then you go in and you're giving your kid a speed bump. So really, you could do with that extending further out along, because there are lots of, you know, families and the state, you are getting a lot of big vehicles there now, because they are taking the bikes and such like things out there, but yeah, kind of, I guess it is what it is really at the moment.
Thank you for that contribution. Tim, do you want to...
Yes, I'll...
Just introduce...
Tim Whittick, I'm an Ecclesfield parish councillor, but also I'm a cyclist, and I've actually been up there today in Grenocide Woods and Worncliffe Woods, but I'm lucky enough to live close enough to cycle there. There are some excellent mountain bike routes in Grenow Woods and Worncliffe Woods, and they attract mountain bikers from all over, not just Sheffield, from Lancashire, and people who drive fifty miles just to come and cycle there. So, I think what Mike was saying about parking, parking the car park there is not big enough. And they've just opened a new third route down from, it's in Grenow Woods, the Blackrun has just been revamped, so we're going to get a lot of people coming to have a go down there. People not only park on the top car park, mountain bikers will park, I think it's Station Road at Deep Car, and they'll cycle up, we see people coming in at Chapel Town Station with the bikes, and they'll cycle to the top. If you can imagine cycling from Chap Station to the top of Grenow Woods, which is a thousand foot, you know, there must be an attraction there for them to do that. And it is, there are some excellent mountain bike, and people are just going to come because of the attraction of cycling down those routes, but there's probably, as we say, not the car parking there to accommodate that.
Thank you Tim. I think that the woods themselves and the areas are a success that's attracted all this, and it not only attracts cyclists, it attracts dog walkers, it attracts families with young children, and cyclists, and just people walking and just having the leisure. So it's, we're a bit of a victim of unsuccessful that area, but it's just how you cope. There were some issues with various users, but they seem to have disappeared, and really now it's just the, just the access to it and parking, yeah. Thanks everyone for contribution, thank you. The second question was from Dennis Patton. He's not here tonight, but I'll read it out, and he says, hello, I have a couple of questions about the quality of the Amey Road repairs. One, why are many of the roads deteriorating so fast? And two, when will they be repaired to a decent standard of longevity? And he says, thank you very much. We have had a full response from Amey, which is two pages, virtually two pages long, we will add that to our website and it will be there for public information, and we'll feed this back as a written answer to Dennis Patton.
Just to say, we've had, we've had a winter where we've had two very cold spells and one very wet spell right in the middle. And the cold spells have caused the road surface to crack, particularly the second time, because the second time water's got in and then it's frozen and it's broken up, so there are some challenges with that. Amey will, if you report it online, they will get there, do an emergency repair and do a full follow-up within four to six weeks. And the second thing we've found is that with the amount of heavy rain we've had, we're getting subsidence on certain roads. So if you go down Whitelane, Whitelane, it's collapsed next to a stream that runs underneath it, so we've got road infrastructure problems as well, so it's a major challenge to sort these issues out. And clearly, putting in banking and reinstating a road is not cheap, so I think we'll have one or two issues around for some months to come. Thank you Chair.
Thank you very much. There's no more, we'll move on. Oh, just before I do move on to the next agenda, just to say at the meeting, the last meeting on the eighteenth of January, we had two questions, and we have supplied written answers to those. One was about phone mats, and the other was a traffic issue, but they are on our website and have been...
Thank you. This is just something that we want to make everyone aware of, hopefully you are already, just to add to that picture, from this May in the local elections, there will be a requirement for people to take voter ID when they go to the polling station. As you can imagine, we're just trying to make everyone aware of that, there's lots of different forms of voter ID that people can take, so a bus pass, for example, is completely acceptable. If people have no voter ID, there is a way in which they can apply for a certificate to take to the polling station. I'm told by colleagues that as this has been discussed and we're trying to share this information, a couple of key messages, one is, this is not a Sheffield decision, this is national legislation, and the other is, concerned about whether this affects postal votes, it doesn't affect postal votes at all. So essentially, we're just trying to make sure the message is out there that when people go to the polling station in May, they will need some picture ID. So, obviously sharing it here, any opportunities others have to share that, please do. We just wanted to save the opportunity to share that. So, thank you. If we can go back to my report, I'll stand up so I can actually see it, so I'm going to take you through a couple of different things. One is about the area committee's budget, and the other is just a bit of an update on the work that we've done actually throughout the whole year. So, to give a bit of context, the area committee has a hundred thousand pound budget for this financial year, and previously at the other meetings that the LAC has held, we've allotted just under seventy-two thousand pounds, and then a further six thousand pounds has been agreed under delegated powers for decisions that are taken under five, it's under, it's under five thousand, isn't it, sorry. So if we go on to the next slide, these are the things that have been decided since the last meeting, under the delegated power, under five thousand pounds, I don't intend to go through them all in minute detail, these are general things to support work in the area, so for example, supporting the local food bank, which is in Parsons Cross and East Ecclesfield Ward, supporting the church at Stannington, that made itself available during the fuel, the gas issue that we've been hearing about. Some other things, we're looking to put an information booklet together to make sure that people have all the information. You will see as you came in, there are some leaflets actually about cost of living, please do take some of them. But there are a number of fairly small measures there that have been agreed under delegated power. On the next slide, we have another project that we're bringing tonight for a recommendation to the committee. So, Stockbridge has an established food bank, and the people who've led that food bank for a number of years are at the point of stepping back from that, and that's led to some reflection in Stockbridge about what they do next and about the model. And they have talked to the people that have been involved, talked to others in the community such as the town council, and they're looking at actually a different model, where they use a building up higher up in Stockbridge called the Christian Centre, and they provide not just a traditional food bank where people can come once or twice a week and ask for a food parcel, but actually throughout the week, there is a community shop, there is a community cafe, there are places where the community can meet, and where those needs are apparent, people can be supported with them in a way where they're involved in lots of other community activity. That project is an ambitious project, and it requires a fundamental reworking of that building, and so the proposal is that the area committee puts twenty thousand pounds towards that, which would enable kitchen facilities on that new site, that would essentially be the first phase of reworking that building. The project has a number of other sources of support and is talking very actively with the National Lottery, who are very supportive of that project, but the proposal tonight from the committee's budget is that twenty thousand pounds is put towards... But the proposal tonight from the committee's budget is that twenty thousand pounds is put towards that project. And specifically, um, that new kitchen facility within that. So, um, that's a recommendation, Chair, if we can take that and then I'll, I'll move on.
Thanks, Dave. Does anyone, any comments before we look at this? We have discussed it previously about the food bank. Can we all agree then? Sorry, do you want to? Can we all agree then, please? Yes, so please, thanks. I think that's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. So what I now want to do is take you through some of the work that the area committee has been doing during this whole year. So actually, because we move the, uh, area committee meetings around the four wards. Last time we were in West Ecclesfield Ward, we were kind of at the beginning of this process and we haven't really allocated any of this budget. And a year later, back in West Ecclesfield, we're able to give you a bit of a picture of the things that the area committee has been doing. So one of our priorities was about cleaning attractive environment. And I think people will know that actually we want good facilities and if you have rundown facilities, it makes up a whole kind of natural space and a park space feel rundown. So there's been the priority to support the upgrading of a number of park sites. So the picture you'll see there is Wadley Park Village, where the goal ends, you can see there, uh, have been put in, some drainage work has been done. That's alongside the Bradford Parish Council. We've also done work, uh, in Grennyside Park to renew some railings and some tarmac-ing to get that footprint of the play area as they want it. To then apply for further funding. And, uh, a number of pieces of work at Fox Glen, again, working alongside the town council, where, um, we have funded some new swings and some repairs. And actually then the Friends Group that we're working with has got some additional funding for a new climbing frame. And then last time round, the committee also agreed funding for new swing frames in a couple of parks in Stockbridge. So that's one area of activity, if we can move on. Thank you. Um, we know that highways, when we consulted, uh, I think across the whole city, was a huge priority. The area committee doesn't have a massive budget to deal with some of the big fundamental issues, but has been able to do a number of practical measures. But the left-hand picture you'll see there is, I think, called a vehicle activated sign, which wasn't actually out of the committee's budget, but out of, uh, the highways budget. It was made available to have one of those signs in each ward. So we have, um, six different locations in each ward where we move those signs around. And then that's giving us intelligence, um, actually about how fast people do drive and areas that we might want to prioritise in the future. The other pictures, um, this is my best photography. I am thinking of making a lack calendar. You know, but your choice whether you want to purchase it, but these are some practical things we've done. Um, Priory Road, where we've worked with East Ecclesfield councillors, where we've got a perennial parking issue. And those bollards are stopping people parking in a way which blocks the junction. We've still got further work to do, which we're doing, but that's made the junction safe. Uh, and the other, uh, picture is of Land School, where that barrier has basically stopped people parking. Um, actually in a way it's very dangerous because it's the brow of a hill. Um, so a number of other measures, but there's some practical steps we've taken around, uh, desire to have safe roads in the area. So if we can move on. Um, we had a conversation, um, with one person about why we didn't have a specific crime and anti-social behaviour, um, priority. And we said, that's part of our priority to improve communities, but we were thinking we need to take action where we're in a position to. So obviously the police is primary responsibility, but we have really strong local police teams. So we've had an ongoing dialogue with them about things we can do to support their work. We know that more than anything, people want to see police, they want police presence. So the left-hand picture is two bikes that the area committee bought for, uh, the team that covers the Ecclesfield Ward to enable them to be out and about. The sergeant actually sent me a very wizzy, um, kind of, uh, graphic of him cycling all around the world. I've got no idea how we would have displayed that, but, um, they're very actively using those bikes. And then the right-hand picture is a device called a tint man, which means if somebody has tinted windows, um, the police can stop them and check that those tinted windows are legal. And sometimes people with tinted windows don't want people to see inside their car because there's interesting things happening. So by doing that, that's given the police a tool to check that that vehicle is legal and also see if there's anything else, uh, useful that they can find out about from speaking to that driver. Uh, next slide, please. So there's all manner of smaller projects that the area committee funds. Lots of which are through the ward pots that many of you will be aware of. And if you're not after the election, community groups are able to apply to each ward for small funding. So there's a cricket club there in, uh, Utterbridge. There's a, a, a planting project, which is literally round the corner from where you are outside. That's the Stannington Food Bank, um, some planters in Chapel Town, and then the very recently launched, um, new lunch club for High Green. And that's part of our commitment to have vibrant community life and trying to particularly support the voluntary sector with the work they're doing in the area. Okay, so this is where it gets even more techie. So hopefully, um, we're now going to see a little video about the youth club that normally meets in this room that the area committee has funded.
All right, so we're here at the High Green Development Trust for our youth club that we do every Friday, six till eight. And it usually gets a good way for young people to socialise, meet new friends, join in with different activities and, uh, just keep them safe and off the streets, really.
What do you enjoy about coming to these sessions on a Friday evening?
Because you can socialise and make friends.
You get to like, it's fun and you get to meet, um, like you play games and that.
And also people come in like sweet dogs and, um, like they teach, they help you like learn about safety and help.
That's just a very practical example of, um, one of the things the area committee has funded. We've known that there is a lack of youth work in the area and, um, the area committee has enabled the, the youth club that meet here, um, to, uh, to, to do that and for that to be established and hopefully to continue in the future. Um, so just a couple of final thoughts in terms of trying to give a bit of a picture. We, we also talked in the plan that we put together based on what local people have told us, about the kind of values and the flavour of how we wanted to do things. So councillors were very clear, they wanted us to listen to young people's voices. So within the establishment of that youth club, um, young people are involved, not just in coming along, but in how that club works. We've also gone out to Forge Valley School with one, some of the councillors to meet their student council. And, uh, we had, if you'll remember, some of the youth cabinet members at a meeting a few months back in East Ecclesfield. So we continue to be committed to hearing from young people. Another real priority for your councillors was that we prioritise those in greatest need. So we've supported the food bank proposal that you've had tonight, also, uh, the other food banks, um, at, uh, Parsons Cross. And in Stannington, there's been support, there's support very practically for some of the sites that supported the community during the Stannington gas, gas crisis. And for families who are, um, currently living at Stendrop Lodge locally, which has been used for asylum seekers. And then we also talked about, um, ways to build connections. We know this is a very big area and sometimes there's an issue there about people accessing what they need. So, uh, we've done a number of bits of work to think about digital inclusion and to think about how we can support people to, to get online. And actually what we're finding from that is, it's often not that they're not online, but they don't really understand everything they can do with that. And we're doing, we've done some work to try and find out about community transport possibilities, um, which we looked at in one small area, Bolsterstone. Now we're going to think about in Warrall. And sometimes that doesn't cost any money at all. That's just that kind of exploratory work to see what's possible to talk with partners, particularly to talk with the voluntary sector. And so the very last slide, a very practical thing, we're going to have a clean-up in this area next Thursday. That's something that the local councillors asked for. Um, intrinsic in the way that we work is we immediately thought, well, we need to do that alongside the parish council. We need to do that alongside the trust here. So that's a very practical thing that we're doing as we continue to try and meet the needs of the area, but always, uh, working in partnership. Okay, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Dave. Thanks for that report. Uh, and thanks to you and your team for the past year really of all the work that you've done and getting to where we are. Um, I'm really pleased about the High Green Youth Club. There used to be a, a youth club here a number of years ago, uh, but we haven't had one. And this starting up to me is a, a, a real, a real good thing. Um, and I think what we've done over the last year, I think we've, we've got lots of good initiatives and lots of things to build on. Uh, and, and looking forward to next year, see how we can develop the, the things that we're doing. So thank you very much for that. The graphics are very good. Thank you. Um, does anyone else want anything to say about, before we move on, about the last year or where we are? No? Thank you. So, uh, the next item is the, item A is the Sheffield Caribbean Sports Club. Uh, and over to Leroy Wenham. Can you come to the front, Leroy, and, and sit somewhere where you can have a mic and, and tell us about the Caribbean club? Thank you.
Hello, um, right, I've come with two of my colleagues to, to give you a little bit about the Caribbean Sports Club. Um, you let me go and talk earlier. Yeah, sorry I didn't get you. I, I know, I've, I've been to four different buildings, so I need to, I obviously need to get to know the area a bit better. Um, but the Caribbean Sports Club has been established for over thirty years, um, on the Common Ecclesville. And it's quite a thriving, um, sports club, um, with quite a bit of success over the years. I think we're an, an open centre, although part of our priorities is about promoting, um, Caribbean, um, sports and Caribbean culture. So one of the things, for instance, that we're doing now is working with the English Cricket Board to help them to ra-, um, recruit more people from the black community into their cricket teams and cricket leagues. You know, we have, I think, seven or eight, um, football teams, um, that play there every week. Um, ranging from juniors right up to senior level. Um, we've got cricket teams, I mean, the cricket season will be starting later in the spring. And again, um, from those teams over the years, we've had quite, quite a lot of, um, good success. We've had Devon Malcolm, who's ended up playing for England, um, cricket. We've had, um, there's people playing in the National Football Leagues. Um, we have people, we, we now have hockey there and hopefully that's going to be something of the future. And again, it, we're an inclusive, um, unit. And I, I, I keep on stressing that because I don't want people to go away thinking that it's only a facility that caters, um, for, for people from the black community. It's an inclusive. And if you look at the teams and the things that we do, quite often you'll find that there's a lot of inclusivity, um, within that, you know. Um, one of the things that we obviously want to do is to be a facility within the area. Um, and we have, um, sort of plans, um, for the future where, for instance, we would like to build a new pavilion. Um, because the building that's, has been there for years and, uh, I think we've outgrown it, it's not really fit for purpose. Uh, and we could actually do with something better. So we're putting quite a lot of effort into trying to get a new pavilion built there. And it's something again that, um, requires support in order for that to happen. Um, again, things that quite often people sort of come to, um, to visit us from other areas and the car finds it. So all the things, for instance, that we, we, we need to actually look at this signage, how, how do you actually get to us? You know, you come down the common and you go past and before you know it, you're either in Chapel Town or you're in the police station or wherever. But, um, you know, so things like signage and so forth is things that we will be looking for. And obviously if there are developments within the area, um, you know, there are facilities there that can be, um, improved to bring sports, um, to the local communities and into that area. You know, um, the last addition that, you know, over the years, we've done football and cricket as our main thing. But we've had quite a successful netball team where, um, all the girls who became women left and, um, and left a vacuum. And it's something again that we would like, um, to, to restart. Things like basketball, again, is something that we'd like, um, to do. Um, in the past couple of years, we've actually, um, uh, started doing hockey, you know, an independent, um, group place. Become, wanted to join a part and do a partnership with us and bring their hockey teams to the facility. I think what I'm saying really is that, um, I would encourage people to treat us as an asset to the community and what we actually bring into the community. Um, and help us, help us to develop it so that we can also help to develop the area that we serve, yeah. Um, there are some plans, um, that I've just put on the back, that actually talks about, um, the, the pavilion. It also highlights things like, you know, when we opened thirty odd years ago, Clive Lloyd, who was then captaining, um, Western's Cricket came and did the opening. Um, as I said, you know, we've got Devon Malcolm, who although he's in playing first-class cricket at the moment, is still quite instrumental within the England Cricket Board and so forth. And he's actually helping us to actually get some recognition within there. I mean, and from that, um, at the moment, we have got a new programme that's providing, uh, cricket coaching in schools now. And that is going to unfold in a big way. It's very much at its, um, in its infancy. But we actually currently enforce schools across the city. Um, we'll be doing more and more workshops within that. And I think over, you know, over the next year, you'll be hearing a lot more about young people, um, and the surge to get young people into cricket. And as I said, although the pri-, the primary aim is to get more black people playing in, um, cricket, it's not exclusively, um, about you, anyone can actually join in and play. Is there anything you two want to add?
I don't know anything I'd add. It's not just about sport, um, the organisation, but it's quite different to Malvin as well, so, you know, open to. Open to older people, uh, to women, so just making it, it's a positive in that way as well, with it's open to as many people as possible. And Malvin's important as well, if you're more traditional sport.
Does anybody want, want to ask me any questions?
Well, thank you, thank you, Leroy. Is there any, any questions?
Uh, last question, it's a comment.
Yeah, I've got a mic, wait. Thanks.
Yeah, I just want to say, um, I think this is a hidden gem. Um, I've lived for well over forty years at the top of the hill. Um, and I've driven past the sign that says Caribbean Sports Club many millions of times. The first time I went there, uh, I think it was last summer, did you call it an open day? Yeah, I thought, you know, all sorts of sports going on. Uh, and, and we, um, the parish council had a, no, not the parish council, what was that at that time? I think it was the library, Ecclesfield Library, uh, had a stall there, various things going on. And, uh, I just thought that was a lovely atmosphere. And then I went later on for the tree planting ceremony and talked to lots of people. Um, and I, you know, I just think it's a wonderful facility. I think as well as just new signage, um, it would be lovely if you had more publicity about what you offer. You offer a vast range of things, as you say, to everyone. And I think, uh, if we could help with advice or whatever, but for. And I think if we could help with advice or whatever, for publicity, that would be a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Question?
Right, thank you. Question?
Have you managed to get back to the same level of activities now as you were pre-COVID?
Yeah, yeah, things are building back up. Yeah, things are building back up gradually. We've got quite an extensive programme that's planned for the summer. As I said, the cricket schools are starting. There's an event coming up to celebrate the Windrush in June. You know, again, we'll have a normal family day in August. So I think, you know, I'll take on board what you said about publicity and how we can actually get any publicity, I mean, and any help that we can actually get to distribute. But there are a number of activities that we've got planning and certainly the numbers are quite significant. I mean, you're talking about, you know, having a regular attendance of over 100 people, mainly young people as well.
Just a couple of points from me. You mentioned basketball. I know that the Sheffield Sharks do some really good outreach work, so I don't know if you've ever connected with them, but that, that may be worth doing in terms of basketball. And the other thing is, I don't know if the Look Local comes round here, I think it does. That's the free newspaper that goes out across the north of Sheffield. Do you not get it over here?
I'm not in Ecclesfield.
Not in Ecclesfield. Depending on where you cover, they have in their newspaper every week a what's on section and you can just send in a couple of lines about the event you've got on and they will publicise that free for you, just, you know, Saturday, two o'clock at Caribbean Sports Centre, you know, basketball for whatever age and they will, they will put that in free. So while it may not get Ecclesfield people, it may perhaps pick up Chapel Town and round there. So as a starting point and something that doesn't cost anything, that's probably just worth going to see how it works. Look Local, yeah. You can email them at news@looklocal.
Anyone else? Thanks very much, Leroy. Remind the members of public and councillors that your display's there afterwards when we're finished and we'll come and have a look and perhaps you can talk us through some other things on there. Yes, yeah. But thank you very much for coming to now. Thank you. The next item is item number nine, which is the Thorncliff Leisure Centre. Ian Dickens was due to come, but unfortunately he can't. But he has sent a verbal update, which they will just read out.
Thank you, Chair. So I've just dropped that on to a couple of slides so you're not just hearing me talk. So a few areas of update. They have a warm space at Thorncliff, which they've said is open at any point in a week, but there are two specific sessions on a Wednesday and a Thursday for coffee and games. They've said they're committed to developing their roles as a social enterprise and they're very keen to talk to partners. So if there are others who like the Caribbean club, would be interested in a conversation with them, then Ian, who's the manager, I'm sure would be very interested to chat to you. As it says, they're now taking food bank donations and looking to tie in with the, with the food banks locally, which would be great because they're literally in between one here and one at St Saviour's. And then just a couple of things about their, their specific leisure offer, that they're putting the family fun pool session back on weekends from the 27th. And then they, they have had a big refurbishment of the gym. So obviously I'm sure they'd be very keen to people to have a look and see what they've got to offer. So just a few specific updates there from Ian, who is the centre manager.
Anyone got any comments or additions? I'd like to add that it's been there now for about seven or eight years, the leisure centre and the pool. Excellent facilities when we moved from the old baths at Chapel Town. It is well used and the lessons and everything that goes on in the pool. Like all leisure centres and gyms, they've been hit by the energy crisis. Heating pools is very expensive business. So I think he's got a real challenge on his hands there as a company to maintain the pool and opening times. They're doing the best with what they've got. And what has added to the footfall in there over the last week, and it's been very noticeable, is because of the closure of Hillsborough Baths for maintenance, major maintenance, people have moved elsewhere and quite a lot of them are already coming up to next door to High Green to use the pool up there. So that will hopefully increase footfall and help the leisure centre along. But I think the next probably six, 12 months, a lot of leisure centres, especially the one with pools, are going to find it really difficult to maintain the current provision. Yeah. No, no, nothing else, okay. If we can move on then to Ecclesfield Parish Council. And is it Tim that's going to give it? Yeah, get the mic, Tim. Thank you.
Right, okay, there's a few things want to go through. And I mentioned this at the last lack meeting, we're not increasing the precepts, so there's no increase in what we're charging households for the running of Ecclesfield Parish Council. We've recently held a successful community skip day on the 28th of January, it's Scottway Chapel Town. Several tonnes of unwated items were recycled or found a new home and further ones are planned for early summer in Grennyside and Burn Cross. We had previously held one at Angram Bank in High Green as well. The refurbishment of the community room, which is next to the council offices, so if you're going out, it's just under let before the council offices, is open and we're getting a steady stream of bookings. It's 16 pounds a session, which seems, you know, if you've got quite a long session, it's a bargain, isn't it? So if you need, if you need a very well, it's been, you know, refurbished to really high standard, get in touch with the parish council. We've recently distributed about 20,000 pounds in grants to local groups and organisations in support of their activities. Plans are underway to celebrate King Charles III's coronation the weekend of 6th of May. There'll be a range of activities, including a big lunch on Sunday, the 7th of May, which is likely to take place at Mortonley Park. We've done some great work with the local police, we've had some walkabouts with the police and the sustainable community officers, local councillors, council officers. And it's usually an hour's walk round the local district, so we've had one round High Green and yesterday there was one round Chapel Town. So, yeah. We've also jointly signed on the Community Safety Charter developed by the Neighbourhood Watch, which is a formal that we will do everything that we can to provide an environment that is safe to everybody. We've been awarded a bronze award by the Defence Employer Recognition Scheme in recognition of the parish's support for those who've served in the armed forces and their families. And we've organised a visit for local Ukrainian refugees to the Mayor's Parlor at Sheffield Town Hall. This was hosted by the Lord Mayor of Sheffield. That's about it for this one. Thanks very much.
Thanks, Tim. Yeah, you mentioned about the precept, a nil increase, and I believe it's same for the Bradford Parish Council and Stockbridge Town Council. I think that's the first, the whole three parish and town councils have had a nil precept now. And I think it's commendable in this year and the coming year when the, you know, cost of living and everything else, it's not an extra burden. And I commend all the three councils for that, yeah, really good. Thank you. The final item is an update on referrals to policy committees. At the last meeting in January, two issues were referred to the Transport Regeneration and Climate Policy Committee. One was regarding, from Sandingham councillors, the reduction in speed limit on railroads and rural roads. And the policy committee with that one has requested that the issue be referred to Kate Martin as Executive Director for City Futures. The second one was regarding residents' parking scheme on Smith Street, Chapel Town. And again, that was referred to the same committee and with the same outcome that the policy committee requested the issue be referred to Kate Martin. So that were those two using the committee systems. The next meeting will probably be in June, if we follow the cycles that we have been doing, it will probably be at Stockbridge, a location at Stockbridge. Is that right? Yeah. So I thank you all for coming tonight. If you have any questions or want to see councillors, we will be here, if you want to have a chat with us. And please do see the presentation which Leroy has brought. Safe journey home, everyone. Thank you very much. Thank you.